I was laying out campaign literature and I put humor.
You did, can you?
People never do because as I was laying it out.
Give me a second. To get my agenda out.
Flemington Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. Secretary, please call roll.
Chairperson Sobolski.
Here.
Commissioner Barberina.
Here.
Secretary Gail Greger here. Commissioner Dor Shavitz.
Here.
Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Lettowek.
Here. Thank you. We have the approval of this evening's agenda, but I need to share with you folks first that we discovered that the sign at the site, I'm presuming you're all here for the SPARs development, but the sign at the site had an error in it and it had today's date correct, but it had the day of the week wrong. It said Tuesday instead of Wednesday. So to err on the safe side, unless the attorney comes in and advises us, we don't feel that it meets the statutory requirements of a proper posting. But, I know you're all here, we don't want to extend this, we'll still have public comments as if it was a public hearing. It will be part of the record. We're going to take into consideration your comments, but we'll have to reschedule a public hearing. Really, I mean, you're welcome to come to that public hearing if we do have to, can't have it this evening, which at this point it looks like we cannot, you don't really need to come in. We'll have a notation of your comments, so I thought you might want to know that right at the beginning. So with that, do we have approval of this evening's agenda?
So do we?
Well, let's just leave it. You know, when we get to the public hearing, maybe the attorney will show up.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Barry to approve the agenda for tonight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of our January 17th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one correction. Under unfinished, yeah, unfinished business, letter A, the PC 2493, the motion that I made, there are bullet points, 1 through 6, actually, 2 and 3 are actually 1, should just be number 2. So if we can take out the 3 and then make the 4 a 3 and the 5 a 4 and the 6 a 5.
So, let me make sure I understand that. 1 and 2 are just 1? Or 2 and 3 are just 2?
2 and 3 are just 2.
Okay.
And if you read it, it reads together that way, which is R1, single family.
Are there any other?
I noticed that Dennis did an exemplary job, Kendra did an exemplary job, but Gail did a fantastic job.
What can I say?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
They're moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Greger to approve the minutes as corrected. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. When we get to the public hearing part, and I presume, oh, public comment first. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to a non-agenda item, anything other than the SPARs development? Okay. With that, on the public hearing, so Ms. Howe, do you want to read through your planner's report and we'll just handle this as a regular? How would you want to handle that?
The commission can't take action until we have the public hearing, so.
Just listen to the folks that came out? And no presentation from the applicant?
I would say if the applicant wants to make any comments, that would be appropriate at this time.
And what about your planner's report?
If we're not going to take action on it.
Nothing, okay.
Well, they may want to hear.
Yeah, they might want to hear. Can you just read the summarization, what your recommendation is, so they know?
Sure. Trustee Dor Shavitz, would you like to pull up the packet, or at least the site area?
We can't hear you, man. Do you guys have mics?
We do. We are using them. The system here really is very poor.
I can't hear you. Anything you said is in your bag.
Yeah.
And you're not even talking.
All right. Well, sorry about that. The system here is very poor. We've known about it for years. They've tried to make corrections and it doesn't seem to work. So we'll try our best to speak loudy, and I have the mic right here. Usually it sits back.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
What do you want me to bring up?
The applicant's presentation is within this PDF packet. I have to zoom to that. Okay. The proposal, I think the commission is familiar with the general location. This is the SPARs florist and greenhouse at the northwest corner of Joy Road and Lilly Road. To the south is Can Township. The property is owned, the R1, one-family residential district, and the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to the C2 general commercial district as the applicant desires to develop the site with a planned unit development in the future. The site consists of five separate parcels totaling approximately five acres in size. The second, the second page of our memo discusses the process, and I just want to make clear here and highlight that the proposed rezoning is a conditional rezoning. So as part of that, the applicant is offering conditions to be placed on the property in order to provide the township with more assurances of what could be developed in the future. So in the C2 general commercial district, there are a number of uses that are permitted potentially on a site. That includes a hotel, drugstore, drive-through, auto repair, gas stations. But since the applicant is proposing a conditional rezoning, they are limiting the available uses on the site in the future. And the first step is to do a conditional rezoning because you can't have a PUD under the R1, one-family residential zoning district. I know we've covered this before. So on page 2, yep, right there, thank you, where it has the three different stages. We're in stage 1, conditional rezoning, sub-bullet I, in the red, where the planning commission is reviewing this recommendation, an application. It would then go to the Board of Trustees for their ultimate approval or denial. Stage 2 would be that planned unit development, and that would consist of at least four steps that are outlined, and then the third stage would be engineering and the civil. The applicant has revised their development proposal, hence the second public hearing for this project.
We'll share a lot.
And they've revised it to, as before, keep the greenhouse and the florist, but reduce the scale of that operation to develop elderly housing. This would be a single-story assisted senior living facility and a corner mixed-use building with first-floor commercial office medical uses and second-floor lofts. And there would be eight proposed loft units as part of that. The remaining pages in our review discuss the six different zoning criteria for evaluation of the proposal and how it aligns with the 2025 master plan. Trustee Dor Shavitz, the other PDF has the...
Is it the 2015 master plan?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, what is it?
You said 2025.
Oh, 2015, no. There's no reference to the 2025 master plan as that is in draft.
So which PDF do you want?
Yeah, that, this one. That would be great. If you can expand that, because the public can see the concept plan right there.
Right here?
Yep, that or the next page. That shows it over the aerial. And they've revised that proposal so that the northern building is in a assisted living complex with the center area being the common areas, the shared spaces, dining facilities, et cetera. And each of the wings would have 16 units.
And Laura, that's a single-story development, the assisted living piece, correct?
Correct, yes. So in our review, we do discuss building heights, as that was one of the concerns of the adjacent residences, and is tied to one of the key purposes of the zoning ordinance, which is to provide for adequate light air and reasonable access between uses. And this table that we provided shows that the assisted senior living complex would only be one story. And in the R1 district, you can have 2 and 1/2, if I write. So it's less than the allowable height of the district.
Laura, could you go through the statement of voluntary conditions that the applicant's proposing, just for the people here to hear what specifically the applicant is seeking?
Yep, so this would be tied to the recorded document as a conditional rezoning. And they are offering to rezone the subject five parcels to the C2 district to prohibit the uses that are listed in the C2 district, to keep the SPARs greenhouse and flower shop establishment, to construct an elderly housing assisted senior living facility, and at the southwest corner of the parcels, to construct a mixed-use building with first-floor commercial office medical uses and second-floor loft apartments. Should the parcels not be developed as a PUD with the above-listed limited mix of uses, the site would revert to the R1 zoning. Essentially, they're not being approved for the site plan that you see on the screen. This is a concept plan, but this is what would be flushed out in the PUD and contain this mix of uses. Otherwise, it would revert back.
I had a question on the voluntary conditions, because it says all of the items, I'm looking at number 1, all of the items listed below, except, all the items listed, numbers 1 through 11 of page 20 of the ordinance 99, and that includes like retail, restaurant, drugstores, and banks. They're also saying no to the special land uses, which are hotels, bike shops, gas stations. But then in number 4, it says "commercial." So what kind of commercial would be permitted if like retail, restaurant, drugstore, banks, hotels, gas stations are not permitted? Do you follow what I mean?
Yeah, the first-floor retail would not be, it would not be like a, it could be a bank, but it could not have a drive-through. It could be a restaurant, it could be a cafe, it could not have, it could not be a Taco Bell with a drive-through.
Okay. But that would be hashed out at the PUD?
Exactly, yes.
Or?
Yeah.
Okay. So would the planning commission then have to say over what type of commercial is allowed in there? If it can be retail or restaurant at the PUD level? Or would that be at the level of approving the voluntary conditions?
The applicant has to offer the voluntary conditions voluntarily, so the commission wouldn't be able to place any additional restrictions on that, only during the PUD process.
Okay, because it just seems a little confusing what was written here. So maybe if you could look that over before our next meeting?
Okay.
Thanks, Laura.
Laura, in their whole project overview paper, it makes a statement that only two driveways were proposed along with Wayne County improvements to Lilly Road. You'll recall from prior public hearings that the traffic conditions along Lilly were a major concern. Is the developer given any more specifics about what those improvements would be to Lilly Road?
No, and at this time, the applicant would need to work with Wayne County in order to understand what those specific improvements would be. Wayne County would dictate those.
Are you done, Laura?
Yes, since we're not taking action, it might be a little premature to go through the findings of fact. These are listed on pages 8 and 9 of our report. That would be A through I that we've listed out, with some sub-bullets under each, primarily the goals and objectives of the 2015 master plan.
Okay. Should we take comments from the applicant?
If the applicant has anything to add, yes. Since we will be holding another public hearing on this at the next available meeting, this would be fully written to the record, the report, as well as a presentation by the applicant.
Okay. So does the applicant wish to say anything at this point? You don't need to go through your whole presentation, but in general terms, if you wish, it's up to you.
First of all, we apologize for the mistake on the sign saying Tuesday, February 7th, so we'll make sure that gets corrected. As Laura said, you know, without it being the public hearing and the full presentation, we, you know, listened to the planning commission, we listened to the residents, and looked at different options and decided that a senior assisted living facility would also fit that property and also fit our clients' goals and what they want to do, along with the mixed-use building on the corner to help buffer the entire site. Again, my clients have contacts with Henry Ford and Trinity Health, that the intent of the apartments would be for interns and nurses and doctors and things like that that come in to the Plymouth area for one to two years at a time to serve at the area hospitals. So that, the whole idea is that that building would be a medical-style building. So while it does say "commercial," I actually pulled that language out of Laura's letter when I put that in there. But our intent is that it would be doctor's offices and dental offices, you know, podiatrists, things like that, and things that would service the assisted senior living. So we think that both of those items together work together. So that's where we went with this, and that's the presentation that we would have for you.
Yeah, I'm Paul Sukumeli, counsel for the applicants as well. And I guess, because we're going to do this again, I guess we're happy to answer questions, but I just want to stress that the intent of this revision here was to address the concerns that were raised previously. But to be clear here, because it's an assisted living facility that we're talking about, the expectation, and this really is the province Wayne County Road Commission as it is, but as opposed to the township, but the expectation is that there really wouldn't be or shouldn't be a dramatic change to the traffic, because the residents that we would be expecting in facilities like this are not really expected to be heavily driving. This is an in-person assisted living facility. There's not, we don't expect each resident will have vehicles. We expect that they're going to be staying there for the majority of the time. There would be provisions related to how they're cared for, as Scott mentioned, the surrounding buildings that we're talking about. But in terms of traffic flow, I mean, I would, again, there's more to be done to do, to present and work with Wayne County, but we would expect that there would be probably less traffic than there would be had this portion gets submitted to a presidential subdivision, quite a bit less, because our residents who would be expected to reside there are just not going to be driving. And that's one of the reasons why we looked at the shift here, because that addresses, I think, what was the main concern. But as Laura mentioned, in terms of things like height, this is going to be actually significantly less than what you would see, the residents would see in terms of the background of their houses, certainly the subdivision behind the facility, than you would see with normal residential housing as it is. So we're trying to address each of those points, but we think that this is, we don't just think, it is absolutely consistent with the 2015 plan, and that's identified very well in the report itself. So again, we know we have to do this again, but we're happy to answer any questions. We would hope that the commission would see that this is a very earnest effort to address any concerns, but that it actually really does meet the 2015 plan, as opposed to, I think, the prior meetings that we had where it was more of a focus on what the 2025 would be. We're not going there, saying this fits with what you have now, and therefore we think that this is something that should be considered as a conditional rezoning. I want to stress that. This is not approval of the PUD. It's, we're asking for permission to ask for permission. I stressed that as I did last night. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, that's it? Okay, thanks. So with that, we'll open the, sort of the quasi-public hearing at 7:21. So if anyone wishes to come and speak, step up to the podium. I think there's a place there for you to sign your name, so we have everything accurate for the record. So it's open.
If we plan on coming back to the actual public hearing, should we not speak?
It's your choice. You can speak here tonight, and if you want to come back when we have the official, you know, legal public hearing, you can come back then too. So it's whatever, you know, I don't know what all your schedules are. We appreciate you coming out and, you know, making time on your schedule. Unfortunately, you know, we didn't realize until just recently that the sign was incorrect. So you can choose whatever you want to do. I mean, I don't want to turn people away if they have something to say and, you know, adjusted their schedules. So it's up to you.
My wife and I live at 9,000 North Lilly Road. We've lived there for 49 years. We're on the east side of Lilly, just north of Gray's Greenhouse. So there's a field that separates Gray's from my house. We already have apartments to the north and the east of us. Traffic on Lilly Road, especially during morning and evening rush hours, is congested to the point that we must plan extra time if we are leaving or returning home. And I won't editorialize more on traffic flow, or the reduced amount on traffic flow. The change to senior housing instead of all apartments at SPARs does not diminish our concern of increased traffic in already a congested area. Senior housing still means additional residents, cars, staff of cars, and visitors with cars that will be using Lilly and Joy Roads to come and go. We also support our neighbors on the west side of Lilly Road who oppose commercial buildings and parking lots being constructed in place of the existing family homes, single family homes. This drastic change is unfair to the homeowners who have lived adjacent to single-family homes for many years. The developer has indicated that a benefit of this project has improved property values. That's ludicrous to expect this to happen. Living adjacent to, behind, or across the street from a commercial development or parking lot would never be attractive to a buyer as a single-family home neighborhood. A final note, I've been all these meetings and hearings concerning this topic. Many of us in this neighborhood have spoken in opposition of this development. Other than the developer, not once has anyone come forward to support it. Please listen to your residents and deny the zoning from R1. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kristi Piku. I live at 9001 North Lilly Road. Good evening to you all, and thank you again for understanding our concerns about the proposed rezoning of the SPARs property. My neighbors and I have shared many thoughts and opinions as to why we feel rezoning the SPARs property would have a negative impact on our quality of life. Tonight, I would like to simply reiterate some of the main points why the proposed rezoning is so disturbing. The SPARs property is, according to the 2015 master plan, zoned R1 or a single-family residential and has been that way for decades, a fact that most of us here tonight relied on when we purchased our homes. According to the Plymouth Township zoning map, besides the Ann Arbor Road corridor, commercial property is strictly limited within the township to areas along Plymouth Road, Beckin 5 Mile, Sheldon and 5 Mile, and a small parcel at the Ann Arbor Road and Ridge intersection. Existing commercial property is bordered by industrial property, public land, and/or multifamily residential property. Commercial property does not consistently neighbor residential property. Therefore, rezoning the SPARs property would not be in alignment with existing zoning patterns within the township and fundamentally conflicts with adjacent land use. In April and November of 2023, the planning commission denied recommendation for the conditional rezoning of the SPARs property. It was acknowledged that the proposal did not align with the current or future master plans. Rezoning property from residential to commercial is historically atypical. The rezoning of the SPARs property from R1 to C2 is a giant leap and would set a dangerous precedent for existing residential property bordering major intersections within the township. We can be certain that increasing density by 48 retirement units, 8 loft apartments, 7,900 square feet of multi-use buildings, and all the staff and other business activities that would accompany these developments along with the SPARs business would undoubtedly intensify traffic, noise, light pollution, and create other disturbances in the area. Finally, the 2015 master plan for land use discourages spot zoning of office, commercial, and industrial land uses. The master plan further states a longstanding goal is to avoid locating commercial uses at every intersection of major roads. Any new commercial development should not be located in an area which could negatively impact residential developments. The revised plan proposed this evening is a mere relabeling of buildings on a map requesting the same zoning change from R1 to C2 as in the past. Developers with backgrounds in landscaping and banquet halls lack the experience and proficiency to facilitate proposals of retirement homes, multi-use buildings, and loft apartments. My neighbors and I would like to remind you that we welcome improvements to the SPARs property and hope to enjoy increased property values and other benefits of enhancing our community. We feel strongly that this can be achieved by keeping the current R1 zoning and developing the land with single-family homes. This would bring stability to our community with families that take pride in ownership, investment, and shared values. Single-family homes would allow opportunities for those interested in downsizing, first-time home buying, and possibly even renting. It would also mean preserving valued green space and may increase participation in the residential tree program. Residential homes would also help...
You're going over the three minutes. Are you nearly done?
I'm nearly done.
Okay.
Residential homes would also help avoid light, noise, and air pollution brought on by commercial businesses. The SPARs business is a Plymouth community staple, and I am confident that the land can be happily developed into single-family homes that would transition much more appropriately to the neighboring land occupied by families like mine.
Thank you. You know, we ask folks not to applaud or boo, because we want it to be an open discussion, and when you do that, then if somebody did speak in favor of it, they're going to be hesitant to come forward. So we want to... So we want to hear all sides. So, um, please respect everybody's right to what they have to say. Thank you.
My name is Najee Kahala, one of the developers, but also I'm a resident. I've got three houses on Lilly. Um, that's something I want to remind everybody. Uh, every time we come here-
You could address us, the commission?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to remind you that too because we have three houses. We pay five taxes, five property parcel taxes every year. Okay? Every time we come here, we get bashed. Um, everybody's got something smart to say. They're, you know, they're the folks that are the professionals that come in here and tell us what to do. It's getting to a point where if y'all don't like what we want to do with the property, buy us out. Leave it as it is. This many people get together every single commission meeting. This is a small meeting, by the way.
You have to look at us.
I don't have to look at you. I'm looking everywhere.
Well, it isn't a form for-
Don't tell me where to look, please.
It's a form for us.
I'm getting back to my point.
All right.
If you don't like what we're doing, give us an offer. Give us an offer, we'll walk away. We don't have to do this development. But by law, we're following your rules. And that's something I want to remind you.
My name is Norton Spith. I've lived there since 1976. And that traffic is bad and if that guy don't want to build all that stuff, he shouldn't have ever bought the property to start with. When you come in the neighborhood, it's all homes. You don't want to go in there and start building houses and getting traffic and everything. We've got enough traffic on that road now. I live right on the corner of that street of Apple Creek. You can't even hardly get in there between, uh, in the morning and afternoon. The traffic is bumper to bumper down through there. You gotta wait till you get out. So we don't need no more traffic. And they say it ain't gonna be no traffic. When you put stuff in there, they got people going to work. They're not gonna walk to work, they're gonna drive. And you got maintenance coming in there, supplies, that's traffic.
Thank you. Any, anyone else?
Wendy Harless, excuse me, 8959 Lilly Road. I just wanted to say that this is the same request. It's the same thing we've heard twice before. They want to change from R1 to C2. It does not conform to the current master plan, the current zoning, the current future land use map. And I believe that's why this body has said in the past, they declined their request to change the zoning because it does not fit. And so I just wanted to say, it's the very same request, it's just wrapped in a different package. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I live at 42434 Apple Creek, actually right next to Edward there. And this plan has the same issues as the other proposed plan. Removal of immature trees, grass, bushes will increase water flow into the creek. Water stored in underground tanks as a, um, kind of a helpful thing for that will still be released into the creek. I have pictures here from the past of flooding, in case no one knows about that. Here is this, I apologize for my printer, ran out of ink. Stranded car here within the street. This is all water here. This is the street. We have a submerged orange recycling bin. Do you remember those? Well, someone put it in the street right here. I apologize for the picture, um, so that no one would go through there. You can't barely see it. It's just the top of that. When I was overlooking someone's property there before it got sold, here in front here, here we have Hackberry Road River. That is all water right there. Their backyard, this is flooding over the embankment. Embankments, and I'm sure other people can attest to this, are like six foot, seven foot. It's way over that, past the guy's, her fence, and almost into her shed there. She was afraid it was going to get washed away. And it was going at quite a rapid pace. I wish I would have had video of it. It was very, it's not good. This is going to compound the traffic as we've kind of spoke about here, um, entering, exiting the, uh, neighborhood. There's going to be visitors, there's going to be deliveries, there's going to be changing of shifts in employees. Even if some people are still living there, there's still going to be other rigmarole and other, you know, people that work there that are going to be coming in and out. Dentist, my dentist is right next to Fox Hills, right there on Lilly Road. There's already a dentist office there. Dumpsters are going to attract unwanted critters. Um, and as far as senior living facilities, here's a map of all the facilities within a five mile radius and a two mile radius. There's 57, this is just me looking a little bit. I mean, I'm sure there's more. 57 assisted living facilities within five miles, 17 within the, um, two mile radius. And I have a list here of all of those with phone numbers right here. And also for all available office space, more than 200 within that five mile space. And this includes Plymouth, Canton, Northville, Westland, and Livonia. This is within a five mile ra- radius of his location. Um, yeah. Oh, and there's an office space actually right at Lilly and Ann Arbor Road that's been empty since before we started all of these hearings. That still has paper on the windows. So.
I, I have one question for you. You know, when you showed the pictures of the water?
Yes.
So where did that water come from? The creek or it was a backup of the sewer?
Takish Creek.
So it wasn't a sewer backup?
Is right here. And it overflows the banks and it comes into that to Hackberry there, which I'm sure other people can describe it better than I can, since I live on Lilly, but I was overlooking her property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? And you can have these pictures.
You can just give them to Ms. Hall.
Oh, sure.
And she'll take care of it.
No worries.
Put it in the file.
Hello. My name is Kevin Gents. I'm, I was seeing on behalf of my friend of mine, Mark Schoransky. He lives on, um, 42447 Apple Creek. So this is his letter. I just want this, so bear with me. My friend Mark Schomasky couldn't make it this meeting, this meeting tonight. So I'm speaking on his behalf. Mark is a geology minor, he minored in geology at Wayne State. So I guess he can speak with a little authority on this proposal zoning, talking about the water. It really caught his attention in the flyer we, he received regarding the meeting on February 7th. His concern is how this proposal zoning project and development will affect, effect the local environment. There was, what he had hoped, is speculation that open grass areas will be turned into paved lands. In other words, tons of concrete placed over an already high water table, paving over an already high water table, watershed would create what we call a ground swell. The thousands of pounds of concrete would concentrate the ground swell and essentially push the watershed especially west and combo it with an already swollen Tanguish Creek. The result would be flooding perpetual standing water, especially after heavy rains. For the neighbors who live on west of Hackberry and the, and the Colley Sack, of course, the water would seep into basements even though the slightest, even through the slightest cracks. He would advise our neighbors on Hackberry to have, not only had their basements walls checked, but the floors as well, if they have, haven't already done so. And the project goes through, and the project goes through. So, and that's from his statements.
All right. Thank you.
And, uh, my statement would be, the bill sign that says, "The city of trees," well, is it?
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm Bob Budlong and I live in 9161 North Lilly and have for about 25 years, I guess. Uh, I have a couple of things. I had never come to one of these meetings until I came to the first meeting that we had, uh, trying to keep this from happening. Uh, I've been a salesman for 60 years and one of the first things they teach you in sales class 101 is you take everything out of your bag of tricks, throw it against the wall, and whatever sticks, that's what you go with. And I get the feeling that these gentlemen are going to keep coming back and coming back with new ideas until something sticks. And then they're going to come back and tell you, this is what we're really going to do. And it, it bothers me immensely that, I could say, that they keep changing what they intend to do and do we really know what they intend to do? And the other thing is, um, I'm getting to the, that age where, um, assisted living is part of the conversation. I sincerely hope that I am not in that facility waiting for an ambulance in a life and death situation because I will be dead. There is no way an ambulance is going to be able to get down Lilly or Joy in any appreciable time, uh, unless they happen to be coming through at, uh, 1:30 AM. I'd like to thank the board for being here tonight. And it's kind of like, uh, what's my line? Sign in, please. And I feel like I'm on the football draft being on the clock. So I just have a couple of quick comments. Addressing that young man, but he stepped out of the room, I'm sorry to say. He's talking about purchasing three houses and, uh, having property and doing what he would like to do with this property. Well, it seems to me this whole project, uh, he's put the cart before the horse. Uh, you don't go buying property and then say, oh, can I get it approved? Uh, that's kind of ridiculous thinking. Uh, I'm looking at this, I'm assuming it's his presentation to the board as far as a site plan. There's 20 spots for parking for the, uh, for the home center or for the, uh, aging, uh, home center facility. Uh, and there's 40 some people in there. Some of the seniors will own their own cars, some of the seniors will have visitors, especially Saturdays and Sundays. No room for parking. Um, that gentleman was right about an ambulance getting in there, that'd be ridiculous. I, I'm almost feeling like this developer is throwing mud against the wall to see what sticks with the board here. And that's really not the way to do business, uh, in the township Plymouth. I moved to Plymouth Township because it was a quote, "upgrade," but I'm not feeling that with this project at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Nancy Romlaudi, Romlaui, and, uh, I recently purchased last, a year ago in March, the property at 42650 Revere, corner of Revere and Hackberry. And I was surprised to see this development spring up and I was like, okay, that might have, uh, framed my decision to buy that house. But I'm happy I bought it. I love the neighborhood. I love the people. I do not like the traffic and I do not like this proposed development. Uh, I want to agree with everything that all the people that have spoken before me have said about traffic, about parking, about ambulances getting to assisted living spaces. I'm not so sure, I mean, I don't have any of the dimensions of this assisted living that's going in there, but that supposed community area that looks like it's like one tenth of the total living area does not look like it's big enough to have 48 residents go eat there or watch TV there or whatever. When my aunt was in assisted living, they had four or five different community areas available. So if somebody wanted to watch TV, they could go to the TV room, or they could go to a game room, or they could go to various activity areas and not be like, okay, we want to play cards and we want to be able to talk while we're playing cards, but they're watching the football game and yelling and, you know, you have to have diversified community areas and that just didn't look to me like it was that. I mean, you gotta stay in your room all day? That's not what assisted living is. That's nursing home. And if they have Trinity Health and Providence Health connections, I mean, there's a lot that goes into providing an assisted liberty with personnel and doctor supervision and all this kind of thing. So I don't understand where that is coming from, where they have connections. What are the connections? Do they actually have a doctor or a, a, uh, senior living company that's going to run this? You can't do it yourself and the average person cannot. So, and like I said, I agree with everybody else and what they've spoken to tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just wondering if single family housing was even considered? I mean, have you looked into that? There is such a need in this community, they would sell like hotcakes. I'm not sure if it's because you wouldn't make as much money selling them as opposed to your project. I don't know, but I was just wondering if that was even considered? Because really they would just, even the doctors and nurses, the residents could, and they, I don't know, Henry Ford could rent them out to them. There would be no question that they wouldn't sell. So I was just wondering.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Last call. I think everyone who's wanted to speak has a chance. All right. Well, as I said, this was, this was not a official public hearing, but we'll, we'll close it up and as, and, uh, we'll have it, uh, you know, you think we'll have it on our next meeting in March?
Yeah, there's enough time to notice this for the March 27th meeting. It's on the agenda as the next available regular planning commission.
Oh, okay. So that's when this topic will be, continue to be discussed. So thank you all for coming and, uh, we'll continue on with this project. We have no additional new business?
Our monthly report?
Monthly report? Is there any, any questions on the monthly report? Yes.
March 27th. Right.
Seven, seven o'clock and it still will be in this room. Yeah, it'll be in this room.
Oh, where are the mics?
Oh, oh, the, the lighting here or traffic lights or what?
The mics.
Oh, the microphones. Well, I hope so. Did you hear that, Bob?
Bob, can you get that done? Chuck Green is here too.
Oh, well, then there's, yeah, tell Chuck.
Yeah, tell Chuck.
Chuck's right there. I asked him.
Didn't you say the Northville Township ones were really nice, their sound system?
They were displaced some of these, but I didn't like the sound.
Oh, you didn't?
It's actually quite this room, but higher. And I think that's the problem is his huge difficulty.
Too many hard services to-
Yeah, they put drapes on it or something.
Too much balance. Too much bounce.
Have you been to the Phoenix?
No.
Yeah.
Horrible.
Because we saw that in our report. We see them file the monthly report.
I think about that a lot after we built the theater, you know? We had sound engineers. Planning report?
Planning report? Anybody have a question?
I have a couple. It's okay. Laura, as you know, the...
Excuse me. Folks, we still have a meeting going on up here.
Yeah.
We want to continue on with the meeting, so we can't even hear ourselves. So you're welcome to go out in the hall and continue discussion.
I had two items. First of all, we've been having some issues with communication between the members of the planning commission. Emails that both I and Kendra have sent out have not been received by everybody.
I'm sorry.
Dennis asked that I...
Wait, just hold on a second.
Okay.
All right. We still have a meeting going on.
And me, too.
Do you guys mind stepping in?
Could you please take your conversations in the hall so we can finish?
Yeah, we have a meeting going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's been a problem with communication.
Yeah, both notes that Kendra and I had sent to the planning commission members using the group planning commission email address apparently weren't delivered to everybody. Just understand that same thing here, so we now got three members that haven't had this. Dennis asked me to bring this up to Bob Jenks, who has our computer planning here for the township. And he sent me a note back, and he says, "The common item I see is that the issues happen when mail sent to the planning commission group or from an AOL address. I see that yourself and Kendra both have AOL addresses." So he asks, "Are any senders to the group planning commission email address getting non-deliverable messages from non-AOL accounts?" So...
Do you have an AOL account?
I have not.
Oh, who is your...
Mine's a dot com, mine's an Outlook account. Mine's an Outlook account.
And your messages aren't being received? Or you're not receiving?
I'm not receiving that.
Oh, you're not receiving?
Right.
But it's more the people who are sending out from AOL.
Oh. I think that's shut that down about 20 years ago.
I think mine's older. My Huawei, I think, is old. Bob, you got a Hotmail account?
I do, too. I have some Hotmail.
Actually, my AOL account is so old that I don't even have a number after it. It dates back to about 1994. Anyway, okay, so it's clear that we have an issue, so.
Well, I've talked to Bob myself, this has gone over several years, that's why I originally had the one that was at the humisch.edu. I really didn't want it there, but I can explore if you want, we'll go with a different provider that we can just use amongst ourselves, because I don't think there was an issue when it was under the humisch.edu.
Bob, is there a way for the planning commissioners to get township?
Well, that's what I was just going to ask, if you ever looked into the, you know, like a basic license for, let me follow up on that, see what that would cost, because we have to have an effective way and reliable way to communicate. So I'll follow up on that tomorrow.
Because this is an issue, too, with the historical commission, you know? I did the same thing, and again, I wanted to get out of it, but I knew that what Bob had told me, there seems to be some, I can forward to you what he had sent me, this was a few months ago.
It's probably also more secure if we're not using our personal emails.
Well, the thing is, and I would, you know, I mean, if somebody pushes back on the cost, I would argue that you're subjecting your personal email to FOIA if you're using your personal email.
The other, you know, in the city, each commissioner is assigned a city email.
That's exactly.
And it's through their city gov account, and of course, when you get off the commission, it's cut off, but...
Yeah.
That's why the city went to that, was because, just like in the U.S. government, how they've had so many problems with personal emails, they didn't want it in the city. Excuse me.
We did this, we did the same thing at Park. If you remember in the beginning, everybody was using their own personal emails from 1,000 years ago, and we finally got our own domain. So, and it's more professional, too.
I think it's, yeah, I agree.
All right, I'll follow up, I'll see, I'll see.
And I'll send you what he had sent me a while ago, so you can see what he felt the issue was.
Yeah, I think there's a basic license. You don't have to have a full enterprise license. There's a basic license that he can get that is just like email only, and I don't think that's very expensive. It's maybe, you know, five bucks a month or something.
Great, thank you. My other question has to do with the updating the master plan. You know, we had originally planned to do that on January 29th, and obviously, the racetrack took priority. Laura, what are your thoughts now on that? Is there anything you can update the commission on at this point?
Yes, I did discuss this with Chairman Sobolski earlier this week, I think, or last week. Need to confirm what dates this boardroom is available, because even if the planning commission meets for a study session, it still needs to be held in this room. There's no other township facility that is adequate to accommodate the public, so we need to be in this room. And because of the elections and the need to use this space for those elections, the list of dates is considerably smaller. So I need to work with the supervisor's office on getting a list of what dates we could potentially be in here, you know, knowing the election and other events like the blood draws and such that they have, and then send out, like, a poll to see when the commission members could attend those different dates. And then we can get a schedule for the study sessions for the next couple of months. Because right now, even our regular meetings, the next one isn't until March 27th, which isn't an odd date, it's the adopted date, but, you know, they're just, the dates are going to be a little bit unique this year.
So you think in those study sessions will be sometime after March 27th, then?
Probably.
With the, I don't know what you officially call that room, but the classroom, the other large space, is that adequate for, do you feel it isn't?
The township has said it's not adequate, the multipurpose room for public, for public space, for a public meeting, so of the planning commission or zoning board level.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Laura.
Any other commissioner comments?
Hey, Dennis, I just have a question. In, maybe this ain't the right place to put it, but if they did develop that piece of property into residential, how many homes could they build on there?
Have you seen a parallel plan? Have they provided one?
No, they have not provided a parallel plan, they're not required to. We estimated...
It would be smart to do that. It's in your...
I thought it was in your report, Laura.
25 units, is that what you can...
Yeah, 25 units based on the five acres with the, you know, notation that there could be potentially more with a platted subdivision. Because you have to account, if you just did the square footage divided by the acres that are needed for a lot in the R1, it's much more, but then you have to take into account the right of way for the roads, because you have some sort of internal road system, right?
You could put 25 houses in that five-acre space?
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
Wow.
Yeah, by right, that's the allowable density. So if you take 25 units, like in our report, and the expected persons per household from the latest ACS, that's 59 individuals.
Yeah, I saw that.
Because there was a development, or is a development, on the corner of Schoolcraft and, or, I'm sorry, Plymouth Road and the cutoff for Heinz Drive there, just west of Newburgh. And if I remember right, when I saw the development, I think it was 20 homes, and I believe it's three acres or four acres. So I guess my personal feeling is, when they ask for that property to remain R1 or be developed into residential, I wonder how much extra concrete, you know, and grassland's going to go away versus what they're proposing. I'm not saying I'm for either one. I'm just saying that maybe that's something that, I don't know if that's something we should have knowledge of so that we can discuss that at the March 27th meeting, or is that something that I'm reaching too far for as a commission?
That falls under the category of be careful what you wish for.
Exactly.
And we have a really good example from the past where, on Ridge Road, the Northridge Church property, the residents around there didn't want, you know, pushback on the proposal, and they sold it to a charter school.
Football field, baseball diamond.
Yeah.
All that, yeah. I just brought that up for my own knowledge, but I don't know if that's something that the commission should point out to them before they keep pushing for something else.
And speaking of that, you know, there's the person brought up about the water and all that, and I know we got a letter from the Friends of the Rouge. I mean, is that an item that the engineer can go into further detail? Do we need to do some kind of environmental study?
They can, I think that would be good, because that's a real concern here.
Yeah.
Whether it's real or not, it's a concern.
We've definitely heard from the public that there's issues with flooding, and there's concern what that spillover might look like. And we can talk some more about that on March 27th. You know, one thing to know, though, is that that is the existing conditions today. This flooding, right, that's occurring at the property, that's because there is no stormwater management system. Those five acres do not have any sort of system to treat and retain and to detain. And with this redevelopment, all five acres would have to meet that standard and be solely responsible for keeping that rainwater within that five acres. It can't discharge onto the adjacent properties. And that's something that the engineer would cover and can talk more about if we'd like. They're going to be here anyway on March 27th. They don't do a review for conditional rezonings, but they can speak to that certainly. The other thing about this development as a PUD, as related to the environmental component, is that if it was the 25 homes, they all have driveways, they all have rooftops, they all have patios, likely or decks, and they also have, you know, traditional lawns, which they don't have their own retention system, they're not required to use native plants. So there is a consideration of what's the resulting impervious surface coverage with that, the development scenario versus what this proposal is, and is one of them better environmentally, even if the uses may be different?
If you're going to, I don't know if your, what your plans are, if you, on your planner's report, if you're going to revise it in any way, I think those are some of the points that should be included in the planner's report to educate the folks, you know, your points. You know, there are advantages to developing it, and again, I don't have an opinion at this point, but they have several concerns that need to be addressed, and perhaps they can be better addressed when we meet again.
Sure, yeah, I mean, there are things in our report that, you know, we'll cover in March, but like, parking was one of the things we heard tonight, right? Parking is in our review letter. The applicant has, you know, drawn their concept plan to meet the township's adopted parking standards. They actually exceed them, what's shown on their plan. They're not trying to reduce anything. In our opinion, it might be overparked, because there is a mix of uses on the site, and they're exceeding that requirement.
People that live in assisted living don't drive.
Yeah, they have the amount of parking that's required for any assisted living in the township.
Right.
They even exceed it a little bit, so...
Because they don't, they don't drive.
Yeah, those are some things that we can cover and go into more detail about.
Also, on that same topic, Laura, and I'm not saying I'm for or against this development, but I think it might be beneficial to show the progression of the proposals. This is the third proposal, and even just comparing it to the second proposal, putting in this one-story assisted living, it really makes a major difference on the way this property would appear to the homeowners to the north and the west, because it's much lower height, and it appears to me that there's much more green space as opposed to last time when they were parking lots along the border. And I think if you went back to the first proposal, you'd see even more, you know, so, you know, if you could just show each of the three plot plans, show how it has changed. The other thing that I noticed in looking at this is that it appears to me that there's really only one single-family residence that directly abuts this property.
Correct.
And it's a property just to the north on Lilly Road, it's a very deep lot, and I think that is probably a point that needs to be made, too. I'm not sure that, I just want to make sure that the residents understand what's actually being proposed, that this proposal would really only directly abut that one home on the north. And then I guess there's the home on Joy Road, a very deep lot that goes way back, but the home itself is very close to Joy Road. So I think those are points that might help the public better picture what's actually being proposed here.
We can go through the history and a little bit more of that.
Yeah, I think that one lady that spoke today, I think she was the one with the face mask that had been at a previous meeting that was, oh, there you are. So were you the, you just purchased that home recently, like in the last couple of years?
March 22nd, if you accept.
And I think at an earlier meeting, you had indicated that you had come from a situation where you lived near some apartments, but you were concerned about having people in these taller apartment buildings looking down on your property. Am I correct?
.........................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, so my point is that that concern that you had, which, you know, I remember, that was one of the key points that I heard that night, but now that has been, that's gone.
Right.
Because this, now there'll be just a one-story building there.
Right.
So you're not going to handle that situation.
The other thing I said, too, for the second plan, was all the parking lots were there, and all the headlights were going to be showing into every...
That's...
But that's gone.
That's not the case with this proposal, though.
They have changed their visualization of what they want to develop, but one of the things somebody asked me, it's like, once we get to the point where a PUD is, and, you know, it gets further past the point of no return, can everything switch back to their original...
No.
No.
It can't. We actually have a lot more control with a PUD, because it's a contract between the township and the developer. So there's a lot of things that can be required that wouldn't necessarily be required with another type of development, like a platted subdivision.
Does a platted subdivision have to require auto-revision, because I know a lot of developments I've seen in different areas, yeah. Not all of them are...
Oh, you don't have any of her...
Can't hear, yeah, he can't pick up any of this conversation.
No, we can't, we can't. Well, we could talk about that, because we're not picking up the conversation, so, all right. Anything?
Let's not.
Okay, we can touch base later.
I don't know if the pressure, the developers, to be something more and more...
We could talk about, because you're not picking up, so we really don't want to get into that without having a recording.
I just had one thing for Laura. When we have conditional rezonings, can we have the statement, like the actual conditions in the packet?
Yeah. Yeah, that is a new form that we created to go with the Victanius development.
Yeah, it's really helpful to...